Ladies and gentlemen, we will open our regular meeting of the Tiverton Town Council with a salute to the flag.
My question is to the flag of the United States of America, the degree of honor for which this stands, one nation under God, indivisible, universal, and just as a whole.
Would the town clerk kindly read the roll, please?
Councilor Leonard.
President.
Councilor Rudolph present. Councilor Maderas.
Here.
Councilor Durkey.
Present.
Councilor Carroll.
Here.
Councilor Wyman.
Here.
And Councilor Bowlin.
Here.
All present.
Mr. Bowlin, would you read the consent agenda, please?
Tonight's consent agenda consists of the minutes of the regular council meeting, September 11th, 2006. We see the minutes from the following boards and commissions: Planning Board, Arts Council, Harbor and Coastal Commission, Waste Water Management, Sewer and Sewage Disposable Ordinance Review Committee. Correspondence received from Town Treasury regarding $7 million ban for school project general fund. Received from Town Treasury regarding GASB 34, previously distributed from Planning Board, regarding proposed amendments to zoning ordinance, new article 23. Received from Glenda Sacala and Ernest Becochery regarding Shore Road. Received from Madeline Poison regarding letter distributed on September 11th pertaining to Shore Road. Received from Town of New Shore regarding Nobit Casino. Received from Town of Portsmouth regarding expansion of gambling and casino in West Warwick. Received from Town of South Kingston regarding casino in West Warwick. Received from Town of South Kingston regarding insurance companies, nonrenewal and cancellation policies based on geographic location. Received from the Town of South Kingston opposing the expansion of casino gambling. Tax assessor requests approval of tax abatements and a memo regarding abatements, functional and economic obsolescence. Arts Council requests release of carry forward funds, account 665-690, for $163.33. Town Administrator requests release of carry forward funds from account 99105-359 litigation for $5,080.65, and from 99105-375 zoning issues for $20,522.15 to account 105-359 litigation. That's tonight's consent agenda.
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second. Any further discussion with regard to the consent agenda? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Is the police chief here?
Madam President, and members of the council and the citizens of Tiverton, a longstanding employee with the town of Tiverton has decided to retire and enjoy the rest of his hopefully long and full life, and not to chase dogs in town, or many of our many animals. And we have a plaque that we wish to present him tonight, but I know the chief would like to make some comments, and I know some of the dogs in town are coming to make some comments. So with that, I'll turn it over to the chief.
Thank you, Mr. Dickman. Raymond Jones, please. As you know, Raymond's been here for almost 20 years, give or take a few decades. When I came here, he was very informative. He's more than a dog officer, he was more of a quartermaster. He had a variety of tasks that he did. And many, many times, he served the public. He's an animal lover, animal rights activist, and he taught me quite a bit about Rhode Island laws pertaining to animals, and I think he's going to be sorely missed in his community. He did tell me a few stories, little anecdotes, about Madam President's dog that he, on occasion, put in cuffs and let away. And Raymond, I'm going to miss you terribly. You're a friend and a credit to the community. Thank you.
I would ask the President if she wouldn't mind coming around. And for the people who will not be able to see this plaque, it is going to be, it shows a German shepherd. We endeavored to find a yellow lab, because I understand some of our yellow labs have spent many a time in jail, courtesy of Mr. Jones, our animal control officer, so... Madam President, you want to do this, or would you like me to do this? How do you want it?
Well, I have a presentation to make as well, so why don't you go ahead with Mr. Jones?
She called her to, Madam President. We can hide this. Some of us did. This is a service award presented to Raymond Jones in recognition of your many years of dedicated service to the town of Tiverton, Assistant Animal Control Officer from March 25th, 1985 to July 1st, 1988. Animal Control Officer from July 1st, 1988 to September 11th, 2006. And with great honor and pleasure, and on behalf of the citizens of the Town Council, we'd like to present this to you.
Now, that you could put in your office, but you know, we wanted somebody more than that. And all of your representatives of the Hudson mug shops. And we thought it would be very nice if you would take with you some of the, our best friends that you sent to the big house. And I just hope that I'm only at a loss for words because Otis, your favorite dog, is not here. Otis, he had a separate picture, but this is a pretty good substitute for Otis. Actually, he was the one that brought me Otis. Little did I know that Otis, what the cost of the... I think one year we pulled five of them. But he was very, very, he was very kind, he did market you. But this is yours, and you could put it right in your study.
You will. Thank you. That's all, council. Listen, I'm really a quiet person, so this is just to get me up here. Thank you very much, and then I had a real good time serving the town. And as I drive down the street, I still see people, they say, "So..." Thank you.
I certainly am going to miss that blue truck, Tiverton Police, coming around the side of the house with the dog in it.
For your dog.
And with that, we will move to our public hearings. The first public hearing we will do tonight, or consider tonight, is the proposed sign regulation.
Madam President, I'd like to move to take the public hearings out of order and do the Board of Licensing Commissioners' public hearing on the liquor license, you know, first.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. The first, and this will be very quick, and I'm sure that's why Mr. Bowlin moved it out of order. The first is the Crossroads Liquor Inc. request transfer of a tobacco license, subject to meeting.
No, no, this is the liquor license.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Which requires a public hearing.
It's a variety LLC, request transfer licenses, subject to meeting, to Nimrack Inc., DBA 177 Variety. Is there someone here who wishes to be heard on that matter?
Yes.
Would you come forward, please, and sit down and identify you and reply it?
My name is Joe Osiero. Can you hear me? My name, this is Narum Patel. He's the gentleman who's purchasing those two businesses, and he requests that the transfer of the licenses coincide with his purchase. For the liquor license at Crossroads, and the tobacco license at 177 Variety and Crossroads.
Are there any questions from the council?
Public hearing.
I know. Are there any initial questions from the council? And are there any questions or comments from the public?
Madam President, seeing none, I make a motion to approve the transfer of the Class BV liquor license for Crossroad Liquors.
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Now, we probably should just...
We'll make a motion to continue on, sitting here as a licensed Board of Commissioners, and here the next two items, which is 1B and item 2, which would be the transfer of the tobacco license. And continuing on, is that I make a motion that we transfer that tobacco license, meeting all legal requirements?
Second.
I don't assume there's any other comment from the public?
No public hearing for that one.
No public hearing. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
We also make a motion to transfer the vituing license for the variety of store and tobacco license at 177 Bogomash Road, 177 Variety LLC, at 1540 Bogomash Road, tobacco yard dealer license and vitrines.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Meeting all legal requirements.
All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Congratulations, and good luck to you. The best. Welcome to Tiverton.
Thank you very much. Good luck. Thank you very much.
I'm now going to back up to the public hearing. We'll take the first one in order, is the proposed sign regulation. Is there, does anybody wish to go forward as the planning board, wish to have a first comment before we open this up to the public?
I drive a late, distributed a letter on behalf of the planning board this morning. I don't know if you have copies, it's in a folder, but I made an extra.
Perhaps you could read that letter?
Okay. It's short. Proposed Article 12 sign regulations. Proposed Article 12 sign regulations. As a result of meetings that the Tiverton Town Administrator had with the planning, zoning, legal council, and with the building zoning official to discuss the signage issues, the planning local legal council drafted an amendment to the sign ordinance, which was then submitted to the planning board for review. The planning board had its special meeting on August 22nd, 2006, reviewed the submitted draft, which is an extensive and improved rewrite of the existing ordinance. After a brief discussion, which included some additional changes, the planning board unanimously approved the proposed amendment, as modified by the board, and recommended it for adoption by the Town Council. Again, if you have, if you'd like copies of the letter, I have it.
We have. That's the one that came in today?
Yes. Single page, you have it. We've got it in all.
I got this one, thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anybody who wishes to be heard on this one, on this matter?
Yes, Madam President, Bob Martin, Hilton Street. From what I've read in the newspaper, this sign ordinance is actually geared toward signs that are illuminated, or signs that blink, or go on and off. My problem with that is a couple things. One is the signs, if it's deterring to the traffic, why would not the same signs that register temperature and time also be a hazard to driving? The sign in question that I've read about, is the one on Stafford Road, and I find that sign very pleasing, at least to me, pleasing to the eye, and it's also very well maintained. It would seem to me, if we want to look at signs and sign ordinances in town, we might want to maintain our own. I find it deplorable to look at the sign that's entering Tiverton on Main Road at the four of a line. It's in terrible condition. The weeds below it are probably almost as high as the sign. We look at other signs in town, I know there's been several complaints about people having signs in town, but yet we're very selective in the enforcement. Potten Gray just had a time, and I tip my hat to them, I think it was a very nice time, I think it was very nicely run. However, they had signs up in town, which I think borderlineed, or were illegal. They certainly weren't as pleasing to the eye as the sign up on Stafford Road, yet nothing was done. There were signs up and down Main Road, which I think were against our town ordinance, but nothing was done there. Are we just being selective in the enforcement of our sign ordinance? If you want to talk about an ugly sign, I think not only was the plot sign at the bottom of Sosa Road ugly, but also that trailer that was up in Potten Gray, which had a big burn hole inside of it, with a sign on it, that, to me, was very ugly. So in making those kind of comparisons, I think those are the types of sign ordinances that we should be looking toward, not to the well-maintained lit sign that's up on Stafford Road. And I think we ought to encourage industry and business to come into this town, and that's a way of them to advertise. I think it's a nice business that's up there. I personally would certainly welcome more like it in this town. We need all the revenue we can get. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments of the public on this matter? Mr. Town Solicitor, do you wish to have as the draft person of this sign, is there anything that you would wish to add?
I'm not the draft person. I have reviewed it and made comments, some of which were incorporated in the collaboration with the planning board and the town administrator.
If there are no other comments from the public, I will consider closing the public portion of this hearing. Any questions from the council?
Madam President, I have not so much a question, just I have a concern with the banning of both electric signs, and particularly electronic message centers, which I applaud the defining the current ordinance and the banning, certainly the flashing and some of the other things that are in here, I think, some of which are already in the ordinance, and this clears them up, I think, is a good thing. I understand the concept of just maintaining the small-town character, and not to have gaudy, and people have used the term Las Vegas type of things. Electronic message center, though, I think is something different. You know, it's something where in the year 2006, I think they have somebody to have to go out if they want to let people know what's the special of the day, or something like that, and to have them go out with little plastic letters, which would be permissible, and everyone's seen them in the movie theaters, or whatever, where they have, letters are falling off, and I don't think that's particularly, you know, everybody's aesthetic view is going to be different, but I don't think it's an unreasonable thing, or that the electric message, electronic message center is something that we should be banning outright. There may be some restrictions, there may be some things, certainly, again, flashing and things like that, we don't want, but I wouldn't want to restrict a business's ability to do a certain amount of advertising, in a way that I think could be done tastefully with an electronic message center, which acknowledges the fact that we have this technology, we don't have to, a business doesn't have to send an employee out to be changing a sign or something. The flashing part of it and the rest of it is banned, and I'd like to see that certainly in here, but the other, the electronic part, the message center part of it, I have concerns with. The electric signs, too, I'm not exactly sure of the rationale behind that. I understand it could be externally illuminated, but if it's something internally illuminated, would be a problem. And again, it just seems a little too broad to me, it just seems to wipe out the ability to do anything, short of putting a spotlight shooting at a wooden sign type of thing. There may be certain parameters, again, on electric signs that should be banned, certainly anything that would be flashing, or anything that would be gaudy, but to flat-ban either of those is something that, at this point, I wouldn't support. The rest of it, as I said, I am comfortable with.
Madam President.
Yeah.
I think the approach that we tried to take from a code enforcement and the staff is the sign ordinance needs to be reviewed and substantially updated. We put in a number of definitions that were not in your code to clarify the code, because ultimately, whatever decision that we make has to rest upon definitions, as I'm sure Mr. Teitz would tell you. The issue on, and where we looked at it, was what's a changeable copy? Animated sign. Because the code talked about signs that could not be animated, could not do this, but there was no definition for what that meant. In terms of electronic message center, which I don't disagree that the technology of signs is always changing, and we just can't look at, and having a sign ordinance and come back and revisit five or six years, we have to almost look at it annually, because it's a very competitive market, and businesses are always looking for a way to get the edge on their competitors. I understand that. The problem when you start getting into electronic message centers is the issue of, that we're going to find is enforcement, that people are going to say, "The sign is changing." Even now, there is some debate on how much the sign, the existing sign, can change. The sign that is there will be grandfathered in, but this will prevent any new sign until we have an opportunity to take a look at the sign ordinance in general. So this is, I won't say a stopgap, but it certainly is something that I know in my conversations with the planning board, that they know they need to take a comprehensive look at signage in general, and how it affects businesses, and how it affects the appearances. I don't think this is an attempt to make it difficult to do business in town, but it is a way to look at addressing and creating a level playing field, and to address, we have a number of signs that are worn out, and we've not addressed those. We just don't have enough manpower, but this is to give us some time, but I wanted to give you some thinking of why the language is here. This is just an attempt to get control of the situation before it gets out of control. In fact, there is one sentence at the end that was added by the planning board that clearly states that, I think it's back here, that no signs that are not addressed by this ordinance are allowed because of the changes in technology. And it gives the town some breathing room to take a comprehensive approach and update it. I have made it a point, I know Mr. Ames has made it a point, to familiarize ourselves with the National Association of Sign Manufacturers, so that we understand and can better help when somebody does come and want to do business in town, clearly let them know what type of signage is allowed. So I want to reassure the council and the public. I don't know if that's answered some of your questions, lessened some of your concerns, but that's some of the history of what we've been working on right now. But our main issue is addressing definitions, which we felt were lacking. Mr. Rosario agreed, I know Mr. Teitz agreed. So it's a clear interpretation, and it does not put the code enforcement officer in particular in an awkward situation, where he has to make decisions where he doesn't have clear guidelines, and when he doesn't end up having clear guidelines, and he makes a decision, he may be unfairly criticized. And that's the purpose of tightening this ordinance until we have an opportunity to look at a comprehensive approach.
I only have a problem with the internally illuminated signs being a prohibited use. I think there's plenty of them currently around town, you know, whether it be the gas station sign, you know, with the prices on it, but to put, but to put a light inside a sign, to have it shine, you know, whether it be the pizza place, you know, I mean, I just...
They're out there now, aren't they? The ones that, you let the button down, but the ones that have the fluorescent light bulbs inside, isn't that an internally lighted sign?
Yeah.
It sure is.
Well, I don't know where, I'm going to ask Noel and Ali.
Would you direct your, to a particular section?
Yeah, okay, it's under the prohibited signs.
Yes.
You know, I have a problem with the internally illuminated signs. I think there's, there's a lot of them that are currently there. I don't see what the, what the issue of that is, unless you want to get to the brightness of it, and maybe there's a way to put it to a certain brightness standard, but I mean, those signs are...
I'll do that.
Yeah, I see them, I see them all over town, as they currently stands, and I'm wondering why we're making it a prohibited use now. I mean, a lot of businesses are open after 6:00 or 7:00 o'clock, and that's the, you know, without having to put, you know, we're dealing with the Conservation Commission talking about some of the lighting, you know, and ground lighting going up and spreading and so forth, it would seem to me that that's an easier way to light a sign, and a softer toning of a sign is with an internal light.
Actually, every place you look that has a sign, 99% of them in this town have an internal light, where you open up, I don't know if you, I hate the brand, like Cumberland Farms, or any of those, you know, you open them up, they've got the fluorescent light bulbs that go across the inside of them. That's where most, most of the signs in this town are.
Okay.
That's what they currently, that's an internal lit sign, whether, you know, whether they're thinking of the electronic, like the messaging ones, unless that's what they're trying to get away from, if they're thinking of those being internally lit, or so are the other ones, they have a fluorescent light bulb in them.
Yes.
Yeah. Madam President, members of the council, I think, if you look at this, and you can see from the crossouts what was here, it was effectively that externally illuminated signs are permitted, except as otherwise stated in this ordinance. So the way I read it, the internally, the permission, the prohibition of internally illuminated signs is not new. It's just the fact that we're making it explicit, or it before said, "External is permitted" without going into it. Now it's going to say explicitly, "Internal is prohibited." And I understand there are a lot of them out there, and I think what, what really needs to be looked at is on a zoning district by zoning district, and say, "Okay, there's certain districts that illuminated signs are appropriate, and others where they're not." And I guess I would refer to the town administrator's comments at this point, that this is a stopgap measure to deal with certain issues that, you know, to deal with the status quo, preserve the status quo now, and as part of the comprehensive review of the zoning ordinance, which is going to have to follow the comprehensive plan anyway, that would be the appropriate thing to look at and see if it should be changed, which zones should be allowed or not.
I thought the underlined language was new text.
Right, the underlying language is new.
Well, that's part of the underlying language, so that's why I'm saying, you know, you're saying...
It's part of the crossed-out language, though.
External illuminated signs are permitted.
That's crossed out, but I'm talking about the inclusion in the prohibited.
Right. Now it's explicitly prohibiting internally illuminated.
Okay.
But even in the crossed out, it only allowed externally, and I guess I would defer to others who are more familiar with that, but...
So, Mr. Solicitor... So, Mr. Solicitor and Mr. Administrator, well, actually, the, the language is, in the definition, is crossed out. It was an illuminated sign.
Right, right.
A sign illuminated by official light source, internal or external.
Right.
And that was, the definition fleshed that out.
What we adopted is, the language that is adopted there is the standard of the industry. We went to the industry standards for certain language. For instance, electronic message center. We went to the, we went to the industry standard there, glossary on, on definition of terms.
Well, certainly as a stopgap measure, it would enable the town and the building inspector, who's the, to certainly get on top of the entire issue. Because we certainly, that, the flashing signs certainly generated a fair amount of controversy in the town. So I certainly understand the history of where this came from. So... And what is the pleasure of the council?
I'll just, I'll just repeat that I applaud the fact that the definitions, I think that's obviously a necessity. And in terms of it being a stopgap, the things that are already prohibited continuing to prohibit them, I don't have a problem with. As I said, to expand this now to the electronic message center concept, which is something, as I understand it, is currently not prohibited.
Correct.
It's something I, if that were removed, and the internally illuminated, as Tom was talking about as well, you know, I would be comfortable with the rest of it, with the definitions and with continuing the status quo. But to add those at this point, without, you know, going further into this and doing that investigation now and making sure we're, I don't want to put something in place that prohibits it now that we may undo in a year or something, or the next council may undo. I would prefer to not be doing that tonight or as part of approving this.
And I would, I would have to say that I understand where you're coming from, but it was the electronic message center signs that triggered this issue for us to take a closer review now versus to wait until after the comprehensive plan was passed and then turn around and review it as a comprehensive review of your, of your ordinance, your sign ordinance and other ordinances that need to be reviewed and updated to come into compliance with your comprehensive plan. So I don't like using the word stopgap. I would prefer to say it's interim while we address more fully. That is what the purpose, that's the sense of the marching orders that I had from the council when this issue came up, is to bring back some solutions. We've brought them back. And now it's up to you to either support or dispose or amend.
Well, the primary issue was the flashing and was how quickly it was changing, whether that's true of flashing. I think if we put in the definition of what, what makes it flashing, whether it's a minute or two minutes, or whatever the amount of time it would have to remain up, I think that addresses that issue without, again, just completely eliminating. It's not going to affect that sign anyway, which people need to know, that's going to be grandfathered in. But for future ones, I think if we address that issue now, it'd make it very clear that you can't have flashing, you can't have animation, but that we don't preclude that technology altogether, which I don't think is something we want to be doing.
We have already sent the current sign, our interpretation of the timeliness of the changes, and it appears that that is not being followed in my sitting up there one night watching the sign. And, you know, and I will tell you, the standards are all over the place from what I have seen. What makes it a, you know, how, how long should the change be? How, how the letters change? That is another, whole other issue that we're still trying to grapple with. But we are trying to work with the property owner, we've given him direction of what we believe is changeable.
But again, this wouldn't affect one anyway, correct?
Well, some of this would. I mean, in terms of, you already had, you were already using terms such as animation. Now we've defined it, so that it's very clear to everybody.
But if we were to define animation or the flashing now as whatever length of period, a minute or whatever the length of time is going to be, any future ones coming in are going to be very clearly under those definitions. So I think that some of the ambiguity is going to disappear if we do that.
Well, I mean, I'm sure that we're working with the sign that we have now, and until we get these issues addressed, that's why we're looking at closing the door for the time being. And frankly, also closing the door to any signs that are not specifically addressed in our code until we are prepared to deal with them.
But aren't we seeing an essence, though, when you look at the definition of an electric sign, which is any sign containing or using electric wiring, that you're really prohibiting anything that's electric? Whether it's internal, external?
When you do me a favor, when you're hopping through the code...
Oh, sorry.
Did you give me the section you're talking about?
Well, I'm looking at, of course, it's still section seven as it, as it relates to the prohibited signs, animated signs, electric signs. And when you go back to look at...
It's bottom of the second page.
Section two, section two D four.
Yeah. The definition of an electric sign.
Any sign containing or using electrical wiring.
Well, I think if you're going to illuminate a sign, outwardly...
Unless you're using candles.
Yeah, I, I don't, you know, I just think you're prohibiting signs that light up, period.
Well, but that's a sign, you can have a light, you can have an external light on the sign, that's not the wiring or the electrical wiring of the sign itself. I think that's the point. It's if the sign is electrified...
That wouldn't fall under using?
That wouldn't fall under internally illuminated.
Using electric wiring?
No. Because it's not the sign.
Right.
It's the, it's shining on the sign.
Wouldn't you have...
Now, it might be on, it might be mounted on the same structure as the sign, or it might be down on the grass shining up on it. Either way, it's, that's why it's of the electric, the external illumination that we would regulate rather than whether it's wired or not. Because otherwise you could get around it. If we wanted to premonate any illumination, and we just said no wiring, then they just put the, you know, put the light somewhere else and shine it from a distance. So that is not meant to apply to externally illuminated signs.
You know, I, I can see what we're trying to accomplish here, and it's, it's a stopgap measure until the sign ordinance can be looked at and revised. And because of that, I'm going to make a motion to approve the revisions to the sign ordinance, you know, as presented, to move it forward. We're going to be back on this because we're going to get, there's no doubt, there's no doubt in my mind we're going to be back on this because we basically eliminated just about any sign that would incorporate electricity or some, you know, so I'm sure that this is going to become an issue. I think what it's supposedly giving us time to do is see what it is we want to have, you know, for the typical sign in town. Right now, we have a combination of just about everything that is prohibited. It's not going to, you know, I mean, they become, like everything else we do, we make all of these things nonconforming, so they can continue to illuminate the signs that are there. Any businesses that may spring up in the short term, you know, would be affected by this in terms of their, their signage until we, you know, put this to rest. When you do the definitions, you automatically make so many changes to the document that I think the whole document needs to rewrite. But I think there's a fear that we're going to have more of these signs if we don't get our, you know, our definitions together in what is prohibited until we figure out exactly, you know, timeframes and so forth for what a changeable sign should be. And I don't think we're going to do that tonight, and I don't think we should just allow this to continue because what signs may go up while we're still arguing about what we really want to see. So I'm going to move this by making a motion that we accept the changes to the sign ordinance.
I'll second that motion.
Any further discussion from the council?
But before you vote, I think you stood at an open public hearing. I don't think you...
I think I closed.
Did you close it? You think I closed it?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Go on to check.
But I'm always glad to have advice, keep us out of trouble. All those in favor of Mr. Boland's motion, raise your right hand, please. All those opposed Mr. Boland's motion. The ordinance passes. I will now move to something that I know is not controversial, and that is the proposed nonconforming development. And that is Article 14. Now, let me say something at the outset. As in August of eighth, there was a request by Mr. Wyman and Mr. and Ms. Aruda to do a presentation, and the council at its August fifteenth meeting agreed that they could do it, they would, it was unusual, but they agreed that the, what they had prepared as a...
A presentation.
A power presentation, PowerPoint presentation.
The whole PowerPoint.
Would go first.
I don't use that word.
And through some misunderstanding, they were not able to do that tonight. So, but the public hearing will go forward, and we will see where we are at the end of that taking the public comments. So this is something that we have considered for over a year. However, having said that, I will open up the public hearing, and what we are looking at is the draft, which is, is dated 6/25/2006, the entitled as revised, as revised at direction of Town Council. Now, having said that, I will open the public hearing. Mr. Leary?
Madam President, members of the council, I'd just be very brief and maybe more to discuss the process that cut us here than anything else. At the present time, this is only...
Mr. Leary, I've just had a request that you, even though you've been here on this issue...
Oh, I'm sorry. It's a very fair request. Jerry Leary, representing Arthur Smith. As I said, I'd just like to bring us up to where the point that got us here. Present zoning ordinance, as I think the council is now painfully aware, requires any expansion of a nonconforming use, be granted only by way of a variance from the zoning board. Originally, when this debate started, there was a, there was a request by the town, by, I'm sorry, by the planning board to allow expansion of a nonconforming use by a special use permit. And that really was to bring, to try to bring the existing ordinance into conformity with state law by at least approving it to that point. During the discussion, it was proposed by me on behalf of my client and endorsed by several others who appeared here to allow some expansion of a nonresidential, nonconforming use as a matter of right. And the figure that was finally come down upon was 25% expansion. Now, what happened then is in, in considering comments made by various people at the prior public hearings, the, that figure of 25% remained. But if you look through, and I won't bore you with all the details, if you look through the draft that you have before you, the requirements to get there are very, very restrictive in terms of the applicant justifying that he in fact has an existing nonconforming use. So provision, obviously, for lengthy notice to the public before it's granted. Not only that, but the, any, any such expansion has to be certified by a registered engineer or an architect. So I mean, there are very strict requirements governing this expansion. The main reason for this entire request is so that any expansion, however small, of a, of a building in a nonresidential zone, does not have to go every single time to a zoning board hearing. Ordinance, the proposed amendment is clear, if it goes beyond 25%, it may expand up to 50%, but then only with a normal zoning board special use permit. So I think this is one of those ordinances or amendments that's been thought about a lot, but I had a lot of input from a lot of people. We've gone somewhat backwards from what we originally hoped, but that's part of the democratic process. I think it's reached the point where it's a good, balanced draft of an amendment, and I respectfully request that you endorse it and approve it. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard?
Hi, I'm John Moran Jr. from 46 Riverside Drive. You know, the way I read this ordinance, you know, the proposal as it stands, the way I'm reading it, would allow the administrative process to get kind of halfway down the road before an arbiter could get in a word of caution or an objection. Process is already going. This would force an arbiter into hiring a lawyer to prepare an appeal before the zoning board review. That's an expensive process. It's about $5,000. You take a look at this, the developer or the business would, in most cases, have the upper hand over the average resident of this town. You know, and you're putting the homeowner, you know, the vast majority of the citizens in a much lower position than the nonconforming business. And really, that's all I have to say. So I'm against it.
Hey, Mr. Moran. Well, I've heard from one Moran representative, Lawson.
Madam President, ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you very much for this opportunity to talk about this. I'm John Lawson, 105 Preservation Way, Tiverton, Rhode Island. First of all, I want to applaud you for tackling this issue. Obviously, this is a very, very divisive, or potentially divisive issue, and affects so much about our town that's important. You're basically balancing two very, very important requirements or, or needs of the town. The first being to maintain the rural character that makes Tiverton what it is, and keeps all of our property values at the values that they are, and makes this such a wonderful place to live. The second is providing a fair way to allow the small businessmen in our community, and men and women, who basically are the economic engine of not only our local economy but of the state economy, to expand their business reasonably, to be able to, first of all, maintain that character and to, to increase the size of the nonresidential property tax base, which is, which is ultimately important. I'm not familiar enough with this particular proposed ordinance to have an opinion one way or the other. But I will tell you that I am very concerned that we balance those priorities properly, and I have the utmost faith that this council will, will execute that in a way that's fair to all of the properties or all the parties concerned. And I encourage you in that work, and thank you very much. Thanks.
Thank you very much. Mr. Moran?
Charlie Moran, 38 Riverside Drive. Like my nephew, I'm concerned about the extreme expense, this with the setup as set forth right now and provisions in handling certain applications before the building inspector. Would put a lot of people to. I, like a lot of people on the other side of this issue for me, I'm stressed by the amount of expense that's involved in this whole planning process. I think way back in the beginning when I got into it, if I thought it would lead to some of the expenses that I see occurring in the process, I might have tried to do something to put a clamp on that in the beginning. And it just, it really is not a sign of enabling town to be putting people to humongous expenses to prevent depredations to their property. We all want everybody to get his or her rights and freedoms, be able to exercise them. We also, I think, want to see adequate protections for all of our residents. But regarding this whole process, what an odyssey. And I stress that indeed it is odd. Purportedly, this began, it's nothing more than essentially a housekeeping operation with a little bit added, where we would put our zoning ordinance in line with the state statutes, and that certain matters would be taken out of eligibility for variance and instead require a special permit. The added bit that was important was that it had the likelihood of avoiding litigation here in town, and that, of course, is salientary. Now, skipping all the variations and would-be alterations put forth in the year or so since... Now skipping all the variations and would-be alterations put forth in a year or so since, actually fourteen months since this came forth, now we have a proposal whose most significant feature would give nonconforming uses twenty-five percent and fifty percent expansions as of right in residential districts, while barring such luges to residential uses. And this in a community that most of us see as residential, indeed the comprehensive plan, with which you'll be wrestling later tonight, which you have wrestled with up till now. That update trumpets, and indeed, I think, the initial, the predecessor trumpets, a rural, small-town character. And it has as a land use goal patterns that, among other things, preserve not only that character, but at the same time discourage incompatibility of uses, minimize the incompatibility of uses. And that, folks, is where we get to nonconforming uses. I mean, that's in the comprehensive plan. Now, are we going to go and hand things out? I don't think so. I don't think it's the way to go. Recall that earlier this year, the same provision would have barred nonconforming expenses in residential districts. Not now. Now the bar is to residential uses, but not residential districts. And as I said earlier this year, beyond bizarre. Usually, when proposals go back for amending or rewrite, you would expect the result that comes back to you to be an improvement. With this proposed amendment, always seen as a tendency, the stuff to come back worse. And at some points, that seems almost impossible. Research shows no such giveaway of this sort to nonconforming uses anywhere. Could it be because it is such a bad idea? In the fourscore years since municipal zoning has been around in this country, certainly the concept must have come to mind somewhere, but never has any community gone this route. That should speak volumes, and their synthesis would be simply that such would be horrible planning. And indeed, the red on the Supreme Court, and as I noted them before on at least a couple of occasions with regard to its feelings on nonconforming uses, and I think sometimes they go a bit overboard. But in a case decided this past spring out of East Greenwich, for unanimous court, Mr. Justice Flaherty said, "In fact, we have subscribed to the view that a lawful nonconforming use is, quote, 'a thorn in the side of proper zoning and should not be perpetuated any longer than necessary.' The policy of zoning is to abolish nonconforming uses as speedily as justice will permit," unquote. Now admittedly, that's only dictum. However, it's repeated dictum, folks. At least, the Rico case is cited for it. I believe there's another case that used it since. But if it, is it, let me ask the question. Is it appropriate to give such uses encouragement? The encouragement of expansion as of right? Is that fair? Is that fair to the average property holder in this town? The average business owner? I don't think so. Not with the, as I say, I think the Supreme Court's a little bit beyond here, but that's what it's been stating in this decade plainly. Doesn't like nonconforming uses. The idea is to wipe them out as soon as possible. It was suggested to me that perhaps the best way to defeat this proposal is to show something where it would be hurtful. I don't think that's, I don't think that burden falls to me. I think the burden falls to those on that side who would show that it would not be damaging. And I don't think it can be done. In legislative halls, in law school classes, an unusual proposal like this often evokes the question cui bono. That's Latin that loosely translated in its main meaning is, means for whose benefit? In other words, who stands to gain? And of course, we have two businesses that have been in the forefront, completely open, about this. At the outset of this process, we heard about a couple of businesses that had problems, a couple of other businesses, and as I understand it, one of them had its problems taken care of by the zoning board. I'm not going to speculate any further on this. All I can say is that as far as this, if you wind up passing this, I'll tell you, the people who will not benefit, the people of Tiverton, this will be to their detriment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moran.
Perhaps you should proceed with that portion of the Article fourteen amendment that would bring Tiverton into conformity with the state.
Just as I did with Mr. Leary. Just state your name.
Stu Hardy, one six two Colonial Avenue.
Thank you.
But with respect to an expansion, the twenty-five percent expansion is problematical. I agree with Mr. Moran that there could be instances, I'm thinking of view sheds, for example, where neighbors could be disadvantaged by such an expansion. And since you were about to embark on a comprehensive thorough review of all of the zoning ordinance, perhaps you will be able to find a way to accommodate the legitimate concerns and grievances of business owners who would like to expand and should be allowed to expand in appropriate parts of town without providing this twenty-five percent across-the-board entitlement. That's what it is. It's an entitlement. And so I would associate my remarks with Mr. Moran. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hardy.
Members of the council?
State your name.
David Campbell, seventy-six Riverside Drive. Sometimes being a pioneer is a good thing, is a brave thing, it's a courageous thing, and sometimes it's just a bizarre thing, like Mr. Moran indicated. This proposed ordinance would be unprecedented, as in no one else does this. No city or town in Rhode Island, no city or town in the country that I'm aware of encourages the expansion of nonconforming uses. And not to be redundant, but I was going to cite the very same portion of the very same case that was decided three months ago by our Supreme Court, which said, "These uses are to be suffered. They're accommodated. They existed before zoning. We'll let them continue to exist, but not grow, not expand." And at every turn, we're going to attempt to discourage those uses out of existence. Here, you're telling your residential taxpayers, you move in next to a business, you think it's going to stay the way it is. Not only can it expand, we're going to encourage it by telling them they've got a twenty-five percent freebie. They can expand without going before the zoning board. I don't know, I haven't done the research, I don't even know if this is constitutional to talk about, it's poor planning, at the very least, to talk about having businesses in residential zones, things that you've decided once don't belong in a zone. I mean, that's what you did when the zoning ordinance was passed. You said, "This area is for residential uses and residential uses only. If you've built your business, we're going to let you to continue." But now to turn around and say, "In a residential zone, those businesses that existed prior to zoning, we're going to let them grow. We're going to actually tell them they can grow without getting reviewed by the local zoning board." It is bizarre. So I'm opposed.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Good evening, Deb Polish, Lake Road. I'm not going to speak to the language at all because this is not my forte. My concern is really the process and the timing of it. I know members have put a lot of time into this, but my concern is because it is unprecedented and because we do have a completed comprehensive plan now, which is going to trigger that zoning review, and we do have a full-time planner coming on board. I know I would be much more comfortable if we let the body that's going to review those zoning ordinances, let that planner look at something, because it is unprecedented, something that doesn't exist, before we would have approved it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Foley?
John Foley, forty-three Highland Road, and on behalf of the Alliance to Preserve Tiverton. The Alliance has strong reservations about any proposal that is unprecedented, either in Rhode Island or even nationally. We also have strong reservations about a proposal like this that is opposed by the body in town, the planning board, that has the real direct expertise in this area. Those concerns aside, I would echo Deb Polish's remarks regarding two significant upcoming processes for this town. First, the fact that there will be a planner, full-time, in place soon, and there will be a required thorough examination of the zoning ordinance in light of the revisions to the comprehensive plan. With those two events occurring soon, I think it makes good, strong sense to simply defer action on this at a minimum, put this off so that it can be viewed in the context with input by the planner, and then in light of all of the considerations that are being taken into account when the comprehensive plan triggers that zoning amendment. So at a minimum, the Alliance would request that we simply defer any action at this point pending review of the whole zoning ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Foley. Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard?
One thing I should mention when I spoke before Jerry Leary, is that it hasn't been mentioned in this discussion at all, is that one of the things that's in this proposed amendment is that even with the expansion, you still must conform to the dimensional requirements of the zone in which it is, meaning setbacks, lot coverage, all the other requirements that go along with it. Secondly, on a different subject, I understand what some of the speakers are saying about the fact that there's a new planner coming on board, the council is undertaking a review of the comprehensive plan, and raising an issue of timing, but I would respectfully call for the attention of the town council, that we've been at this for a long, long time. We were at this before the financial town meeting, where money to hire a planner was even authorized. We've been at this for pretty close, one way or another, pretty close to a year. So I would respectfully say that the timing has only come into play at the last moment, when we've been debating this for a long, long time.
Sally Black, sixty-four Broadview Drive. I understand everyone's comments, but I just want to make sure that we come before the zoning board, which we've sat at for two years. It is not an easy process. It's a very expensive process, and I want to make sure everyone gets a fair and equitable hearing, whether they have money, whether they have lawyers, engineers, everyone in this town is equal, and I want to make sure that everyone knows it's a very difficult process. We have to make sure it's fair. So when you make a decision later on, when the planner comes or whoever, also, I think this town is unique because I think most of the town is nonconforming. As I look around and hear the R thirty and the R sixteen, the R eighty, nobody can do anything. You have to come before and get permission. So I'd like to see a little research on what other towns are like that. Because I know in my house, when I bought it, I could have, of course, I could do anything. Now I can't do anything. It was changed from R sixty to R eighty. So those are the whole picture you have to look at. It's the fairness, and I know everyone wants that for everyone in this town. We see people come, and if they don't have anything, let's be behind them and make sure they get what they need to grow and prosper, because that's the American dream.
Laura Epstein, Lake Road. I'll just be very brief. I echo Mr. Foley and Ms. Polish's comments. I also have concerns that ripping the pioneers, Mr. Campbell said, I think it warrants further research and more examination, although you've done a boatload of work already on it. I also am concerned about conferring rights to nonconforming uses, that in a zone, R thirty or R sixty or R eighty, and a commercial building is there, you're in essence telling them, okay, even though you're in an R sixty zone, you can expand. We'll allow the expansion of commercial within residential districts, which to me is just a nonsequitur. And I also think that the zoning process, that the zoning examination that's kicked off by the comp plan review, provides a real opportunity to look at mechanisms to encourage the small business growth that we want, because we want our small businesses to thrive. And if it means adopting a mixed-use zone in certain areas of town, I think that's worth looking at. But I would be real concerned about enacting an ordinance that confers rights to nonconforming uses across the town.
Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard in this matter? I will say it again. Is there anybody else who wishes to be heard on this matter? Any member now of the council who wishes to be heard on this matter?
I'd like to separate this matter out, because I know that this portion we're talking about is very contentious based on this. We also have before us tonight Article fourteen, which is the extension, enlargement, or moving, where we talked about some changes in this, and specifically in D, a structure which is a nonconforming by dimension only shall not intensify its nonconformity unless a dimensional variance is granted pursuant to the provisions that stand as set forth in Article seventeen. A structure which is nonconforming by dimension only may be extended or modified without a variance, so long as said extension or modification does not intensify the nonconformity of the structure. This, I think, one of the speakers this evening, Mrs. Black, spoke about, where this is where these people have to come before the zoning board review because they have a nonconformity and are required to have surveys and so forth, and spending four, five thousand dollars, and they're not changing the nonconformity. We've changed the zone on them, you know, in most of these cases, where they used to be in R fifteen, they're in R thirty, where they're a thirty, they're a forty or a sixty. So they may have had a forty-foot setback, in a front yard setback, which is now fifty, so they're nonconforming, and they're not going to increase that nonconformity, but they still have to go through this process. This language clarifies that, and I think goes a long way in freeing up time for our zoning board review. And I think we need to separate this and vote on this separately, because I think this is a lot less contentious than the expansion in the nonconforming districts. And I think I'd like to see us do that, and if there's no further comment, I'd like to make a motion to at least pass the changes to Article fourteen, section five.
If we can do that, I'll second it, Mr. Bowman, because I couldn't agree with you more.
Article fourteen, section--
You have the letter from the nonconforming development, you have this planning board letter--
Oh, okay, hold on.
And it's the second page of that.
Is your motion-- Is your motion, is only D of that?
No, it's to make the changes. I read that one because that's the main one. C is a change here which talks about a matter which intensifies its nonconformity characteristics. A nonconforming building or structure may be moved in hole or in pop if and only if the move is a manner that does not intensify its nonconforming characteristics. That language has been changed, but basically, the change is here so that the zoning board of review does not have to review all of these when it's strictly a dimensional and we're not changing the dimensional nonconformity.
Yes, it's somewhat similar to...
Similar, but very different.
Yes.
And, you know, this is something that has caused, this has caused a number of residents a lot of grief, and I've had people coming to me...
Houses.
Yeah, I mean, an individual wanted to put a two-stall garage in the south end of town, had all the land necessary, could meet all the dimensional requirements for it, but because he was 40 foot from the road, and the new zone calls for 50, he had to get a survey at $3700, the lawyer and so forth to go before the zoning board of review, and before he could bang a nail, it cost him about $5,000, and there was no guarantee he would get the relief he needed to do that. We've had people who went to put a second floor on a house which changed no dimensional requirements and couldn't go up with a house because they had a dimensional variation that didn't meet the zone they were in, and had to go through this extensive process.
No, I understand. I understand. It's also in part covered by B in Page 6, but that's fine, and I understand what your motion is, et cetera.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
Is this particular proposal I'm hearing now, is this something that's been advertised before this?
I don't think so.
I, hold on a minute, because I have something... This...
I'm not sure that's how I understand.
Now, this is... But it's just, what's this advertising?
May I?
Yes, go ahead, please.
Hi. We have, we have a big problem and a little problem.
Okay.
The little problem is, changes can be taken up to the ordinance before you so long as they're brought up at the public hearing. And I know this was placed before you. It was on our chairs when we got here. It was not read into the record. It wasn't incorporated by reference, so I think to the extent that you're going to take up this change, you have to still allow public comment on this particular change. That's the little problem. The big problem, where I get out my big bucket of ice water, is whether this is related, whether this is just a change to what has been before you, or whether this is new. And I think I would have to defer to the planning board and their recommendation. Their cover letter says, in the second paragraph, "After a brief discussion, the board agreed that since the proposed language was intended as changes to the existing ordinance, it was not directly applicable to that proposed Article 14 amendment currently before the council." Particularly with respect to section numbers, it doesn't matter, but I'm, I also, with that planning board finding, I'd be inclined to think it would need to be re-advertised. It's not just tinkering with what we got, but something different.
Go ahead.
I think what we were trying to say was that it's appropriate, and it is, it has been advertised. The exact words are being suggested for a change to clarify that June amendment that you had. On Pages 6 and 7, the phrasing is if the requested building expansion is independent of the dimensional nonconformity. I think what the board is saying is, we concur with the sense that the words "not intensify" is probably better than "independent of the dimensional nonconformity." So I don't think it's as big a problem as you might initially think.
Does the change to Section B1 on the bottom of Page 6, does that essentially say the same thing?
Yes, I think the intensification is a better way of saying it.
Right, but I mean, it's, the meaning of it is essentially...
That's the way the board felt. Exactly. That's why we didn't ask for a re-advertising.
Madam President, I need a little help reconciling this. You referenced that the document we were working with was the one dated September...
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five. Six-twenty-five.
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 Right.
When I look at six-twenty-five of that document, Section 5 is expansion of quarry or mining.
Exactly. That's why in the cover letter, I'm saying that Mr. Rugiero directed it to the section 5, so that it, the sense, and the words that he recommends with respect to intensification should be applied to Section 6, or, I'm sorry. On Page 6, paragraph B, "nonconforming by dimension," I guess that is Section 4 now in your June 2020.
Would that be eliminated, would that B1 then be eliminated and replaced by this other paragraph, which then goes in Section 3?
I think you can wordsmith it to replace intensification.
With all due respect...
Or use that instead of independent.
With all due respect, Madam President, we're already working on something that, in the words of the Supreme Court's Rhode Island Supreme Court decision, is an invitation to lawsuits. Now we're trying to wordsmith two incompatible documents on the spur of the moment. I would suggest all we're doing is increasing the attractiveness of lawsuits, and I think we need to pause and put our language together so we know what the heck we're doing, rather than here at the 8:20 in some odd seconds, shuffling different pieces of paper, trying to put it together.
We're talking two different things right now.
That's what I just said, and that's, and I think that's unacceptable.
I think, I think...
Admirable as Mr. Bowlen's objective is.
Yes, which I think, I think it is admirable.
I want to make, no, I want to make sure it's done enough.
There's two different sections of the ordinance, there's two different parts of the ordinance that we're looking at.
I understand that.
One of them is, is the build-out, which is the 25 percent. The other thing is, is the actual structure itself, which pertains to actually to residents. And that's the problem that we're having with, where we're forcing, you know, people that, you know, that because we've changed residential areas, and we're forcing people to go before, to get variances, to do minor changes to their houses, and it would cost them a fortune.
But that's a different issue entirely.
Well, no, that's in here.
Yes, it is. Yes, it is, it's a different thing.
Hold on, folks. Let's decide on a process.
It's just that nobody's looked at that. Everyone's been, everyone's been looking, surrounding themselves around the 25 percent build-out. You know, nobody's looked at this other part of that ordinance, that ordinance change that's in there also.
Don't say nobody.
They don't see a restriction as to residents.
You know, it's like you're looking at one part of an ordinance change, you're not looking at the entirety.
Can I just point out that Section, old Section 5, now Section 4, on Page 6? If you look at the title of Section 4 on Page 4, it says, "Limited edition, enlargement, expansion, and intensification by right by special use permit for nonresidential uses." So if this is to pertain to residential uses, then it has to come out of this Section 4.
And was placed into a Section 5.
Yeah.
And to be, to be part of the... I think, I think, you know, if there's, if there's a question about this, I want, I want to see this, you know, taking place. What I'm, what I'm trying to do is break these two things apart. Whatever happens to the proposed ordinance with the zoning ordinance on the, on the 25 percent, on the expansion, I don't want this section of this being, you know, married to this, that something goes awry with it. This, this section, something that, I mean...
No, I, Mr. Bowlen, I think what you're saying is, even if, and I'm not certain this is bad, but even if this is deferred, this should not be deferred.
Yes.
Okay. Now we have to figure out if that would be a sense of the council, then how to proceed.
Can I suggest one other thing as well? We're going to pull things out, is that we do still have to make that change from variance to special use permit, that perhaps we do that as a separate from the 25 percent as well, because otherwise, the whole point of this initially was to get in compliance, and of course, we still won't be in compliance if we don't make that change.
Yes, and it would be very nice if we could get at least in compliance with the state general law, which was the beginnings of this whole thing. And so I go back to my statement that we're wandering around here in the thickets, and we need to sort it out, and I don't think we can do it between now and 10:30. I would think that we should continue this and give, give our experts a chance to straighten it out, decide whether we need to advertise. There's too much at stake here by too many people.
Are you making that a motion?
Yes, I'm making an emotion to continue it for, I don't know...
In its entirety? The whole process?
Yes, the whole thing.
I'll second the motion. The next meeting.
Next regularly scheduled meeting. To try to clarify something.
Yes. I'd like to amend that motion to state that we advertise for this portion, which is the statement here, the article, the Section 5, because I don't want to delay this any further. I mean, if it takes 21 days to advertise, or whatever it takes to change the ordinance, we need to get the advertisement in as quickly as possible so that we can get this, this section part done. You know, forgetting how long we spent on the first part, I just hearing too many horror stories over the last three months about people who can't get simple additions done on their houses because of this, you know, without spending the $4,000, $5,000 surveys and so forth and so on. And I don't, you know, I mean, if we want to delay action on this other one for two weeks, I don't really care, but I want this one advertised so that we're going to be able to take a vote as quickly as possible.
Now, could we also, in that advertisement, make sure that we're going to be in the basic language that we started out with, to be in comformance with the state law? I think that would be an admirable objective, since that was the start of the whole thing. But I have no objection to extending it out to get the advertising in and get that done properly, and I yield to Mrs. Mello.
But if we, if it's advertised, and that is the decision of the town administrator after he's had a chance to review it, it's not the next meeting, it's the second meeting in October.
That's correct.
Right, because 21 days.
And can I make a further request, that it be so drafted that if the council so desired, that we could carve out this, this particular provision and treat it separately?
And can get the language complying with the state law? That would be refreshing.
Is that all possible, Mr. Counselor?
No. Mr. Solicitor, you have 21 days to figure it out. I have ultimate confidence in your great ability, but in three weeks...
I don't, I don't like this language either, because I feel that intensify, it's going to get very technical, but I feel intensification is a separate and distinct factor from addition or enlargement or moving. They're all different aspects of it. You can have an intensification without any enlargement or addition. So I certainly see the sense, and I certainly think it could be done, but I just want to advise it'll also have to get, I mean, it'll have to go back to the planning board for their review as well, but I will, I will take it upon myself to just try to very simply wordsmith these two paragraphs so that that can be accomplished.
Because the concept they had in the 625 draft of nonconforming by dimension, expanded into D, so, but I think if we can do it so that we could at least carry out that aspect in a timely way, even if it has to be re-advertized, we want it to stick and do the right thing.
And I will try to make sure that it complies with that section of state law, in as much as I'm one of the people who drafted that section of state law.
Excellent. Our motion...
Well, we also have language, again, making that change from variance, especially that we get to vote on separately regardless of what else we go forward with. Is that a possibility?
Yes. I mean, it'll be, it'll be a separate alternate amendment. You'll have, you'll have, you'll have two alternate amendments, and I'll just have to figure out where to put that language into the big one, so if you want the whole thing, you can. If you just want the appetizer, you can just have the appetizer.
One in column 8. Okay.
Do you understand what the motion is, please?
The motion is that we will continue this. We will request the town administrator to integrate the documents in a manner that would allow the council to vote on what is before us as an extension, enlargement, or moving. That portion is B, and to meet Mr. Leonard's concern that whatever we do, we, on alternate A, conform with state law. That's the best I can do with it. And further, that if the town solicitor determines in his wisdom that this should be re-advertized, we are probably looking at no later than the second meeting in October.
Now, does that also include the Article 14?
It includes, yes.
For the second meeting in October.
But it would have to have one document.
I think the, the motion that's on the floor was to take this for, what, to meet, was one next meeting, and I, and I think that...
I amended that to cover the period necessary for...
Yeah, okay, that's what I'm saying, as long as we're covering the period, so we only have to, you know...
We're going to have this meeting, the motions to agree with this last one. Is that public hearings? I'm sorry, I'm confused. If we have to be advertised for just this portion...
No, I think we're... We haven't closed it.
Nope, still open. Leave it open.
Yes, I'm going to leave it open.
Yeah, I think we're, we're going to continue this public hearing to the date certain of October 23rd at 7 o'clock.
Okay.
And presumably, nevertheless, re-advertise it so as to incorporate this change in a way, so that people will be aware of what we're considering.
That sounds good. Okay. A motion then will incorporate that if the public hearing is not closed...
Motion to continue the public hearing to October 23rd.
Is there a second to that motion?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Anybody further discuss this, if you have that? Hence, all those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries on. Okay.
Do we need to vote on the motion to have the administrator and solicitor work to do their magic?
The motion is to re-advertise.
Yeah. I think...
Do we need to vote on it?
Well, we should. And I'll make that motion.
Second.
Re-advertise. Well, that's, you're right, no. The re-advertising is on that section, whatever they deem is necessary to bring us in compliance so we can discuss and vote.
Motion's been made and seconded to re-advertise as determined by the solicitor and administrator. All those in favor of the motion? I know this is second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay.
And I did second Mr. Bowlen.
Yes. And Nancy, you have that? Okay. Now, let's go to... Okay, Mr. Review and approve the wastewater management budget.
Madam President, at a request from Councilor Leonard, I have recently completed a very extensive review of the operations of the wastewater commission and its budget, because there's been a lot of numbers flying around since before I came here, and, you know, I wanted to have a very clear handle, because typically, this has been managed directly by the wastewater management. And there's been a lot of cooks in the kitchen, you might say. We have done a complete audit...
We have done a complete audit of our accounts to see where we were carrying monies in unpaid accounts. We've also done a complete audit of the number of customers. And what I have before you is the budget that I submitted about four weeks ago, which I still stand by, because I believe the numbers will still support it. I will also say to you, this is projecting some growth, and we do know there will be some growth with customers coming onboard. But it is also a very, typically, you would like to put a budget in that is conservative with your revenue and liberal with your expenses. And that's how many administrators work their magic, to always come with nice budget surpluses at the end of the year. This is very much a very conservative approach to expenditures to meet this budget. It's going to take a great deal of attentive review by the Wastewater Commission and myself. We are going to be working with the treasurer to give the Wastewater Commission a quarterly review, so that if expenses need to be reduced, they will be reduced during that period of time. The goal is to avoid what happened in last fiscal year. A lot of it, because there was just no, there was not enough support for the Wastewater Commission in terms of, in support from internally by this department, town staff. Last year, as I indicated to you, and you've seen, we had about a $21,000 deficit. I have no intention of bringing that budget anywhere near that, but I would ask that you support this budget as presented and reviewed by me.
Mr. Stakman, it might be helpful that if you give a brief synopsis for the TV audience of planned revenue and some of the major expenditures, total expenditure side, so at least the viewing audience would have some sense, not line by line.
The total revenues for the department are going to, we are estimating will be $323,397. Essentially, the largest part of that expenditure, of that revenue is, you know, is our purchase from operations and our sewer usage, which we also collect from Fall River, to turn around and sell to our residents. Our biggest personnel cost and expenditures is obviously the salary of the superintendent and the billing clerk, which we added onboard this past, this past year. Our operating expenses, we do now have a servicing account by the treasurer's office, where the treasurer will be assisting the Wastewater Commission. But our operating expenses are only $21,389. There is capital equipment, which is $2,900, and this is for safety equipment, for when Mr. Lynn Court has to go down into confined spaces. And our biggest expense is the same thing that we show, which is our payments to Fall River, which we pay Fall River $225,000 a year. It is the goal to have a slight surplus of $144 after we have expenditures of $323,253. Now, what does this equate into actual average usage a day? To our 2 million gallon capacity, we are having an average flow of 89,000 gallons of wastewater to the Fall River Treatment Plant. So, if you'll notice, our computation, we use 100 cubic feet. That works out, to 100 cubic feet, works out to 748 gallons.
As I recall, from the time that we discussed this, there were questions with regard to existing sewer accounts and the projected new accounts. Are you satisfied that...
That is why we did the audit. You know, the problem that we had...
The only thing that I have is what was initially submitted. Is there anything supplementary to that?
Well, this is, the only thing that I have has been, is I can get for you, which was given to me today, is a complete list of the customers. We also have been provided our most aged accounts receivables that we're meeting with the solicitor with, about addressing those accounts receivables. We also have some betterment fees that have not been, he smiled, but he knew, and he knows it's coming, as I said, I had to have a conversation with him. We have some betterment fees that have to be addressed. So, you know, right now, we know that we have approximately $33,000 in aged accounts that need to be addressed.
By that, you mean $33,000 that hasn't been collected?
Correct.
Thank you.
Well, I guess...
I'm satisfied.
It's trying to be monitored.
This is going to be monitored. This is, you know, we are still frankly trying to determine, we have customers, and we do not, when they are, the houses are vacant, we do not charge them a fee. And in some organizations, they are charged a minimum use fee. And these are some of the things that we're going to be taking a look at, because we have, for instance, in this most recent billing, 43 customers who did not generate a bill, because there was no usage. Now, that means they were, you know, when it was read the last time, because a lot, we depend on North Teverden Fire District and Stone Bridge to provide us 95% of the bulk of our numbers, which we bill. So if they make a mistake in their system they provide to us, we do not generate a bill. So I've also asked Mr. Lynn Court and the finance clerk to work more closely with those two water districts, so if they see a problem, they address it now versus let it linger in for six months, in terms of how, each, each water district collects their monies differently. So it creates some additional work for our staff.
Okay. What is the council's pleasure? Is there a motion to approve the budget?
At this moment, Madam President, I would make a motion that we accept the budget as admitted by Mr. Stakman, with the understanding that this is going to be carefully monitored, and we also understand that it's somewhat of a work in progress, and that he is going to be coming back to us. I believe he pretty well committed to quarterly reports with where we're at. And that, that would represent progress over where we've been before.
Please.
I'll second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. Okay. Thank you very much. Moving on to the discussion and vote on the comprehensive plan update. As everybody knows, we had a joint meeting with the planning board on September 18th, and continued this discussion and vote to this evening, tonight. So, in the meantime, the planning board has integrated the various updates, and Jane Weidman is here. Jane, is there anything that you would like to say as a supplementary matter?
Actually, very little. I think we carefully went through the notes of what the planning board had voted on to add, in terms of the amendments. Those pages were added to, and then actually Kate put them all together into one packet for you. So you have the complete set of amendments to the plan, which the planning board voted to approve. And the new pages for you. Okay. Why don't I just quickly run through?
Yep, the change is not...
Okay, page one, there's no change. Okay, page two, which is the land use plan. There was some amendment to the language preceding Policy 7, that's at the top of the page. The discussion of the inventory of town land.
Yep.
Okay, and that, that is the only change under land use plan. Okay, then, public safety, the fire department. Okay, that's page five of your new handout. Minor change in the first paragraph, and then a consolidation of the amendments submitted by Ms. Efti, I believe.
That's correct.
And further discussion, so that we reflect her suggestions as well as retrieving some of the original language. So, that mentions that two or perhaps three of the fire stations could be consolidated, but also includes the information about the status of the existing stations. Okay? So, that's, okay, and then, okay, on page six. Actually, it's not, page six, there was a mention that the library cost is $9.6 million. There's no change to that.
It was in the other section.
But under, we'll just jump ahead to page eight.
Page seven.
Page seven, there was, there was a change to the town adminis, in terms of the budget process.
Yep. That was Mr. Leonard.
Right. Is that, is that correct yet?
No. You left out the school superintendent and the school committee, which since they're responsible for the majority of the budget, we...
Okay.
Good point. So it should be something like town administrator and town council and school superintendent and school committee prepare the budget, and it's reviewed by the budget committee.
Okay.
Or some such words.
I think the, I think there needs to be some clarification, because actually, the school committee, the way the charter reads, is supposed to supply the town administrator with their budget to be included in. And I know that's kind of not the way we've been doing things.
It's supposed to be submitted to the town administrator and then be given to the budget committee?
If, I thought that, I mean, I'm...
Let's get the shot up.
I have to go. I know I'm supposed to supply them with the revenue stream.
Right.
Let's look. Let's make sure everybody's on the right page.
This is not the correct charter.
Well, the budget committee. To review the committee, no, the budget committee, to review the budgets submitted by the town administrator and the school department.
Yeah, the school department definitely submits their budget separately, directly to the budget committee.
That's the first, to review the budgets.
Under Article 11, School Powers and Duties, it says, "School committee shall prepare and submit its budget request to the budget committee and, and town administrator as required." That's all it says.
So they give them to both?
Okay, so that's, that's just adding...
So that's just added in.
Just adding the school superintendent and the school...
The committee.
Doesn't say superintendent, just committee.
Well...
Well, he reviewed the budget. Yeah, I mean...
Just like the administrator does for us, the superintendent does for them. Ultimately, the decision is made by us, ultimately, the decision is made by the school committee. But I think it would be a disservice to leave out a couple of key players.
To leave out the superintendent.
Yeah.
Okay. We'll get there.
Adding and school superintendent and school committee, and reviewed by the budget, followed by reviewed by the budget committee. Okay. Okay, then on page eight, the discussion on the library. Actually, in a previous version, we had a mention of the cost to the town is 4.5, but I added language to clarify that the total cost is 9.6, and the net cost to the town is 4.5. Okay, and then the last change, wait, not the last, but under open space, page 11, reference to the three acre area of town farm is removed, and that at a minimum area equivalent to the recreation area, the town farm is needed to develop. So that's it for chapter nine. And then, the new pages...
Page 10, the middle, you're removing the map?
Oh, yes. I guess Kate already took that out of the master version in her office, but that is a note, so that that's part of the official amendment.
Yeah.
Okay, then, chapter 10, these are new amendments to this chapter. And you can see the language in the second full paragraph under new commercial and mixed use development, which is basically word for word of Carol Herman's suggested amendments to that chapter, and then additional language to Policy 2A, reflect and/or complement the unique character of Tiberton. And the same thing with language preceding Policy 3, and additional language to Policy 3, as was submitted and approved.
Small scale collecting ambience. Is that where that gets to the state? And that, that's all the changes. Thank you. I think this is perhaps ready for a vote.
I would make a motion that we approve the new comprehensive plan.
With changes, I stated?
With changes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries. I must say to all the people in the planning board, all the people who worked on the drafting, and the review, and the Jane, and Kate, it's always a monumental job, so our hats are off to you. Now, we go to Mr. Robert, or the fine, uh, town administrator, sorry?
Ladies and gentlemen, the town tax assessor has been having some difficulties in his software, and he wishes to buy, and I'll let him explain it more, more fully. The most important thing to understand in all of this, this is not going to cost us anything. The state is going to fund this, so we always like to get that issue up front. And with that, I've carried over to Mr. Robert.
Good evening, Madam President, Town Council. I've addressed this issue on a few occasions with a few of you, regarding the appraisal software, that appraisal resource delivered to the town. The software, to make a comparison in the automotive world, I would consider it more of a Hyundai than a BMW. The software that I wish to convert to is the BMW of the industry. And again, I think it's very important to stress that we're not paying a dime for this. It's going to be 100% reimbursed by the state or the island under the umbrella of the revaluation.
Just to touch base, I know David talked to me a couple of times about it, where they've tried to work out the current system, and they've tried doing a couple of uploads and everything else just to try to make it work, and for some reason, there just seems to be too many glitches in it. And, you know, I guess he did contact the state, and the state said that they did realize it, and therefore that they're going to reimburse money for it, and get us another system.
Right, where the town's, this is not...
Motion to allow the tax assessor to enter the contract with CRC for the CMA software package and conversion.
I'll second that.
I have a question.
Yes.
Robert, in looking over the licensing agreement?
Yes.
Is that, did I read that solely for the conversion or for an ongoing period at the cost of...
The conversion is going to cost $20,000. And that includes the conversion, the man... Uh, the conversion is gonna cost $20,000, and that includes the conversion, the manpower, the time, and the software itself. The software license is good for one year.
Is one year.
Correct.
Thirty-five hundred?
Um, after this first calendar year, then the annual maintenance will be 3,500, which is typical of all camp software.
Right, no, I understand, but that's, I just wanted to make sure that we all knew it was, which is fine, but.
There would, even under the old software, there would be an annual license fee.
Yep.
So, the state's paying the conversion, et cetera.
Putting out the license fee. Okay, all those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, Ann Anderson.
Thank you.
Counselor Carroll.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the council, last winter, early spring, we adopted a new solid landfill policy, made some changes on our collections, and made some changes to our days that, that our landfill is actually open, and some of the items that we allow into it, with the hopes of making our landfill last a little bit longer. A couple of months ago, we had asked, I had asked that we get a report on it, and I must admit that we got one immediately from Mr. Webster. I was really surprised how fast he cut it out to us through the administrator. And not everyone does get minutes of our meetings, you know, naturally, and minutes of the subcommittee. So, I was just wondering if we could just get a brief, you know, just something brief from the subcommittee, just saying how well the program's working, and do just something to let people know that their efforts are actually working.
Well, the chair of the subcommittee is Counselor.
Thank you, thank you, Paul. As Chair of the landfill subcommittee, we did ask Mr. Webster on the council's behalf, and he provided us with a, a report on August 22nd. For the public's information, we don't have scales at the landfill, so the way that we estimate the tonnage that goes in there is by the volume. So, usually, once a year, we, not usually, once a year, we do a survey of the landfill height, width, we figure the volume, and that's how we come up with the cubic yards of waste, which we figure one cubic yard is about a ton. But what we can measure is trips into the landfill. And from February 22nd through June 18th of 2005 last year, there were 7,474 vehicles in, into the landfill. March 1st to June 24th, which is basically the same period this year, there were 5,786, which is a decrease of 22.6%, which is great news. Now, vehicle trips do not donate exactly how much volume is in there, but my hope is the fact that we've eliminated both commercial trash and construction debris, we can probably imagine that a lot of those vehicles were not as loaded up as they used to be, and when a year is through and we get to check the elevations, the actual volume in the landfill, we'll, we'll know just how well we're doing, but at this point, it's reduced it almost to 23%, which is what our, which is at least what our goal was, and then better. Recycling is up to a, to a point where the, the cardboard was too much for the containers, and a dumpster-sized bin had to be added to the landfill just to handle people's cardboard. So, I thank everyone in Tiberton for their recycling efforts, which is also less trash going into the dump. Also of note is that, as well as the cardboard recycling bin, the, the recycling containers and the metals bin, which we do still take metals, you know, everyone can still bring in their old bed frames and other items into the landfill, have all been relocated from the front, front gate where the little shed was, thank you, Paul, to the back, so you have to drive into the landfill to do that. So, on that note, I would, you know, the council passed this, the landfill subcommittee passed it, but David Webster and Marcia, his secretary down at the DPW, especially at the beginning of this ordinance, had to take a lot of phone calls, a lot of people driving in with loads of trash that were just turned away from the landfill. The town administrator had to handle a few as well. So, we thank them, but what I would mostly like to thank is the two men on the front line, and that's Ray and Kim down at the landfill, 'cause you can be sure those first month, two months, three months, and I'm sure it still goes on today, that people that haven't paid attention to this ordinance have shown up with loads of construction debris, et cetera, that had to be turned away, and we thank, again, Dave, Marcia, Ray, and Kim for their efforts. And thank you. And thank you, Paul.
Thank you, thank you so much for the update.
Can I add one thing to that? There were some questions asked of me, that where it comes to construction debris, people were asking, well, where can I get rid of it? Can we post something, or do we have a place that accepts that, like upon view or somebody like that that takes that material, where we can let people know? I mean, people are doing renovations on their house and say, you know, I can't get rid of the old windows like I used to and so forth. And I was just curious if we have a location that they can go.
What we do recommend is that people look into dumpsters, or if they're hiring a contractor, that they let the contractor handle the disposal of the demolition debris.
But this was like for residents who are doing their own work, if there was a place for them to go to, if we could at least post somewhere.
The only place that I'm aware of in Rhode Island that legally can take it would be, would be the central landfill if they wanted to do it directly.
Okay, thank you.
And so you know, anybody who has called and they found themselves in a, in a jam, we've worked with them, we've given them directions, we've made a telephone call for them to let them know the central landfill, that they, that they were, they were coming, even giving them directions, you know, bringing out the maps for them. We understand this. I will have to say, though, I think to show you how much less trash or debris has been taken in is, right after you pass the ordinance, we had someone want to bring a house in. So, that is at least one house that's not in your landfill, look at it that way. And, and I do wanna especially thank the people from DPW, the two frontline folks, and Marcia, and David, because sometimes people vented their frustration on them. And we know it's a change of way we're doing business in Tiberton, but the staff was trying to work with them and accommodate them, even as they were a little upset. And I really wanna acknowledge the two men working the front gate at, at the landfill. They alone have been very particular in checking people's vehicles, and if they see recyclable materials, they have been sending them over to the recycling center first, before going back into the dump. So, they deserve a lot of credit, as Counselor Wyman has already indicated.
You know. Go ahead, Paul. Just one quick thing, though, I was wondering, you know, most people don't know, you know, off the top of their head, what can or what can't go, and actually, other than beyond normal household trash. As an example, you know, that some of us are aware of a gentleman who put a new stockade fence up in his yard, and he tried to, you know, he loaded bits and pieces of his old fence into his, his truck and tried to bring it down, and he couldn't bring it in. Is there any way, and I know you can't put all the items on the internet, is there any way we could put something on the town website? You know, even if it's just a brief list of what can and can't go into the website?
Well, there was.
Into the, into the landfill.
There was at one time, and I'd have to go back up and check, the ordinance was posted, and I believe some of the statements of what specific items were banned. We can go ahead and update that.
Leave it on there, you know, like, you know, somebody knows, hey, you know, you know, you know, if you're, if you're remodeling your house, you can't bring your windows, you can't bring doors or whatever it is, or if it's, you know, as we know, if it's, if it's something that's chopped up barrel size, it can go out to the curb, and yes, that can go, you know, something.
Well, they can bring, they can bring one item per week over to the landfill. So, if they came in with a window, that would be, we haven't made them, we have not made the residents break that up. We consider that a lodge item rather than breaking it up, but it's limited on what they can bring in. The one bag per week that you could put out on the trash, that same one bag can go into the landfill. So, that's, it isn't that it's prohibited, it is, it is limited.
Even, even if we did like a fly, you know, like an eight and a half by 11 flyer type thing, that, that could be available at the, at the landfill, that if somebody went and picked it, at least they've got an idea of what they could bring and what they can't. I, I don't know, you, you know, it'd be impossible to make a list from A to Z, but just something that would help that average homeowner. Hey, the guy who's cleaning out his basement once a year, and all of a sudden, he borrows a pickup truck from someone, and gets there and finds out that, you know, maybe three quarters of the stuff he can't bring in.
The general rule is that if it's, if it's coming from the demolition of something in your home, be it ripping up the carpets, tiles, taking out a window or a door, that's, that's construction demolition. If somebody comes in with a bed frame, that's furniture, that's not construction demolition. There is a difference.
So, rolled-up carpet is considered, is considered construction, even if it's a throw-down carpet?
If it's throw-down carpet, there shouldn't be a problem, you can put that, throw-down carpet, you could put in a bag and put out what you regularly trash.
I have, one of the fears when we passed that was that we would increase the dumping in town. Has there been any evidence of that?
Probably, the best person to speak to that would be the chief, but Chief Blagie, but to the best of my knowledge, I don't believe that it's been a problem.
We haven't, we haven't seen any other than where people have always seemed to go and dump their garbage even prior to this, and obviously, the chief has instructed his, the men and women under his command, because, you know, that has been a concern. We did see some indications in the beginning, or some allegations that people were burning some debris, but we haven't heard any more, that's kind of quieted down. But I think it's like anything else, you know, if they cut their carpet up and they can put it in a trash can or a plastic bag, it may take them a couple of weeks to get rid of it, but there is that opportunity. As Mr. Webster indicated, if they take out a couple of windows, it may take a couple of weeks to get rid of it. You know, but the problem always becomes is, where is the cutoff of how much is too much, and where, and it becomes subjective down there, and we don't wanna be found or accused of favoring one person over another, and it's a very fine line that those men down there are dealing with, because I will tell you, someone can say that they were doing this, yet it's almost truckload after truckload, they're cleaning out their basement, and some of the, yeah, week after week, and some of the stuff we see is questionable.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Moving on to public announcements.
Okay, Madam President, we have a few, so please, I beg your indulgence. I'd like to announce that the second quarter taxes are due on October the 1st. To accommodate the, our residents of the town, Town Hall's tax collector's office will be open this Saturday, September 30th, from 9:00 to 12:30 PM, 9:00 AM to 12:30 PM. It'll also be again, open again the following Saturday, October 7th, same time, 9:00 AM to 12:30 in the afternoon. I'd also like to remind everybody, the Town Hall will be closed on October the 9th for Columbus Day, which also postpones your council meeting to Tuesday, October the 10th. There is a workshop on protecting the quality of water from private wells, and this is gonna be, is hosted by URI, and it is going to be held at Tiberton High School on North Brayton Road from 7:00 to 9:00 PM on Thursday, September the 28th, and is sponsored by the Tiberton Conservation Commission. We urge everybody, including our friends and neighbors from Little Compton, please come and, and join, join us. I'd also like to acknowledge that while we were talking about the sign ordinance, that we have also been working on fixing up and painting our signs, and I wanna thank Mr. Martin, who has been doing that, and if you saw the entrance sign being painted, if you've been by our community center at Judson Street, that has been painted, the senior center sign has been painted. If you've noticed, Town Hall was recently painted. While I eventually want to scrape it down, that's gonna be some lead abatement issues, but we are, we are trying to set the example to everybody in town by how well we maintain our buildings, by making sure that they're kept painted and our signs are kept, kept up. So, it's an ongoing basis, and also, you'll notice that we are coming to a conclusion on the work in Town Hall for updating our fire alarm systems, and I can tell you that employees will be very happy the day they leave. Right, Nancy?
I certainly will, sir.
And that is it.
Counselor, listen.
Yes, I do have just a couple of things here at open session. I was provided with communication from the Rhode Island Department of Environmental Management. My first thought on seeing the certified return request envelope is it must be bad news, but in fact, it's good news. So, being rare, I'll share it with you now in the public. This concerns the notice of violation that the department issued against Southern Union Company approximately a week ago, where they had incorrectly identified the town of Tiberton as a respondent, and they have now sent us an amended notice of violation, which does not so name the town of Tiberton as a respondent. They point out that, that's no guarantee that that may not change in the future, but at least at the moment, we are not, and this will be recorded tomorrow, so we'll have the correct version on record. The other thing, back to the bad news side, these arrived today. These are filings in the Southern Union National Grid merger case, where we appealed the DPUC approval of the merger. They're motions, they're not the, the argument on the merits. These are motions from National Grid and Southern Union, and a much lighter one from the attorney representing the division itself, moving for summary judgment on our appeal on the grounds that it's moot, because the sale already took place, so therefore, there's no reason to go forward on an appeal. And obviously, we'll discuss the details in executive session, but I think I would publicly state that obviously we'll vigorously contest it. Such a conclusion would be absurd. It would mean no decision of the Division of Public Utilities could ever stand. All you'd have to do was implement it immediately and then say it's moot, we've done it. No administrative appeal would have any sense, if you could just go ahead and do it and say that makes the appeal moot. So, we will be discussing that further, but I did wanna tell, I brought a copy, I'm gonna give it to the clerk, so that she can make copies for you and have a copy here available in Town Hall. They're public documents, I'm filed with the Superior Court, but people could come to Town Hall if they'd like to get a copy as well.
And that brief was filed by, on the question of Edward and Angel.
Edward and Angel filed the brief on behalf of National Grid, and Hinckley Allen filed the brief on behalf of Southern Union, and Thomas Dickinson filed the motion on behalf of Thomas Ahern and the division.
Okay, folks, I think we're ready to proceed into executive session.
Motion to enter executive session under 4246-5A2 litigation.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries.
Motion to continue an executive session on the, executive session on the 4246-5A2 collective bargaining with the IPBO, OP, the police union.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, raise your right hand. Motion carries, we are in executive.